I'm going to gotta. Pushing the record button for this. You're good to go.
Okay, welcome back. Just like we were just here. We were. Um, Savant, do you need to say anything before we jump right into budget stuff?
I want to say that we did get a request from a couple of the community service agencies to be rescheduled. They weren't quite ready to give their presentations or answer questions tonight. So that includes South Side Community Center and the Unbroken Promises Initiative. I'm going to figure out what dates may work best for them in the next, obviously, in the next two weeks, and I'll let everyone know.
Okay, great. So does it make sense as the, I think the majority of the questions we had related to that related to these were for those two? Okay.
All right, so what I can do, they did send me some, some more supporting documents. I can forward those to council now in advance of when they, they come and present.
Yeah, why don't we do that? All right, so I think what we'll do, we do have another public hearing this evening. From what I understand from Scott, we only have one person that has signed up for comment. So I need first a motion to open the public hearing. Rob, seconded by Graham, all those in favor. Next unanimous, thank you. So our public hearing is opened. A reminder, we have you're, you're able to speak for three minutes, and this is a public hearing related to the City of Ithaca 2022 budget. So Scott, I will let you.
Let Zach win in, I think.
Yep. Scott, do you have a timer or?
I can get one here in a second, yeah. Yeah, I'm good. I got a timer. Zach should be in.
So just let Zach know when to start and then we'll go from here.
Zach, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Three minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name's Zach Nguyen. I'd like to object to funding being included in the 2022 budget for the Unbroken Promise Initiative. Yasmin Rashid, who is Vice President of the Unbroken Promise Initiative, sits on Mayor Merrick's Police Reform Committee, and I believe this represents a conflict of interest for, you know, for one organization to be benefiting, that is also making financially benefiting, to be making the calls they are going to be making on the committee. So I also suggest that any funding that had been slated for the Unbroken Promise Initiative be used to improve the situation around the Stat Building on Stage Street, improve lighting, perhaps provide 24 hours private security, fencing of the porch, finding the materials for that, whatever it takes to, you know, reduce the violence and overdoses that are happening there continuously. Because a lot of people have to traverse that area to get to, you know, the pizzeria and the bars on the far side, and it can be very dangerous at night, as far as I understand. So thank you very much, and I yield the remainder of my time. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much.
Great. I think that was it. So we need a motion to close the public hearing. Graham, seconded by Patrick. All those in favor? That carries unanimously. All right, now we are back at our budget process. Just to verify with everyone, I did send around the latest version of the list last night. I know there were a couple of questions. I, I don't know, Laura, did you send around the explanation for what you added to council?
Uh, no, I don't think I sent that to all of council. I, do you want me to send that later, Deb?
Yeah, that's fine. I think you can go ahead and do that. And then I had gotten a couple of questions about just the one thing that I put on. I'm going to put a sort of a summary together of that, so everybody can understand what that looks like. I just need to have a a more detailed conversation with Faith and the mayor before we have the, the pieces of that ready for you. And I don't know if anybody else did any thinking between last night and today and had anything that they wanted to add to the list or modify after last night. So we'll start there, and if not, we'll just start going department by department. And I, I think Cynthia sent around the backup for her item as well, so. Anybody have any list modifications? Not yet. Okay, great. So what we have on the, the docket for this evening is Attorney's Office, Planning, Building, Economic Development, and then our sort of collection of community service organizations. So I think we'll probably start with the Attorney's Office. I did not receive any questions for the Attorney's Office. I did not receive any requests above the mayor's budget for the Attorney's Office. But Ari is here, and he's happy to answer any questions you may have about the budget related to this department. Anybody?
Good evening.
Hi, Ari. Laura? Laura, did you have, oh, there you go.
Yeah, thank you. I need three hands. Just a question to clarify, Ari, the, the two newly hired attorneys, those are full-time positions, correct?
So one is full-time and one is half-time. The full-time position replaced our, what was formerly a 32-hour position or nearly full-time position, which prior to that had indeed been full-time as well. So the full-time is effectively replacing another full-time, which had gone down to 32 hours at the request of the former employee who was in that position. And the half-time is the new half-time position that Common Council funded in the 2020 budget, which we then were in the process of hiring for as the pandemic hit, which of course, we did not hire for once the pandemic hit. And, and then we finally hired for it here in 2021, when that funding became available again, and we were able to find a good candidate for it. So that's who the two new hires are in our office at this time, which includes that half-time expansion to our prior staffing. And as you'll recall, that expansion was targeted at land use and real estate. And that is indeed how we are using the expansion, though not in that iteration of positions, to be precise. We concluded that the best usage of the expansion was to allow that full-time position to focus much more on land use and real estate than it used to, which achieves that, that expansion that we were seeking for land use and real estate law issues in support particularly of the planning department. And then to have the half-time position take on the, most of the contracts, negotiation and review, though not labor contracts, but other contracts, and also foil functions and a number of other functions that used to be housed within that full-time position. That's how we freed up the time in the full-time position to focus more on land use and real estate.
Great. Thank you for that reminder.
No, sure.
Any other questions? Okay, I think we're solid with Attorney's Office. When you have a tiny staff and a tiny portion of the budget, you got a, you got a tiny amount of the budget process, I guess.
Yes, that's right. This was a long and arduous meeting. I really time you took this evening. And I wish you well. Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, next up, we had Planning, Building and Economic Development. I see a few representatives from that staff that are here. We did have a few questions. Trying to get that document open. So a lot of the questions that I'm seeing that we kind of slotted under Planning and Development were not questions that were specifically related to the Planning and Development Department itself. So I feel like we should first talk about the department and the city staffing. And then while we have you all here, there were several questions that maybe can be handled by representatives from your department. So does anyone have any questions related to the, this department itself? For Joanne. Graham?
So I have a couple of questions. I'm just looking at the narrative and it refers to, and I may have missed these, over-target requests, but I don't see in, in the packages, did we get a request over the budget from the Building Department? I don't see it in all the, I know I've got a lot of files open, so I might be missing it. But I can't find one from Planning and Economic Development.
Did you submit a request above the mayor's budget, Joanne?
Yeah, we submitted three over-target requests.
Interesting. Okay. I'm not sure. Faith, do you have those?
Let's see, we had, uh.
I'm looking. Okay.
That's okay. I can, um, I can verbalize them whilst others are looking. I don't have them, I have to search for them electronically.
I can resend the email, Joanne. If, if that would be helpful.
In front of you, Lisa.
I can get it. I can get it in a minute. Apologies, I don't have a camera.
Thank you. That's okay.
I see one OTR, Joanne, if I can jump in, this is Laura for Code Inspector.
Yep.
Uh, one for Events Coordinator and Legal Services for additional information. So maybe you could walk us through what each of those are.
Okay.
Just to clarify, I, I don't have, at least I can't see copies of those. So Laura, do you, you have copies of these?
Um, I don't have copies of the description, but yes, I have memo. It's page 44 in the budget document. I'm not sure that's right. But Joanne has listed, and Lisa, maybe you can find this and send it to everyone, new replacement positions, resignations, current vacancies, new position proposed in 2022 budget, the Electrical Inspector.
I don't think anybody else has what you're looking at, Laura, so.
I just sent, I just sent it to everybody.
Okay, thanks.
Where, where did I find it, Lisa?
I said, I'm not sure. I just sent it in an email that I had sent to Steve.
Yeah, I just got that. Thanks.
Okay, now we have them. Okay.
Yeah, my apologies, I can't find it. I mean, I have it, but I don't know where I found it.
So it's not a problem. We can do this. Apologies, I haven't seen these until now, so they weren't on the list that we have. I'm going to add them onto the list. So maybe what would make sense, if you just want to go through them one by one, we, but we also, I don't know if anybody else had any generalized questions for planning, so we can tackle all of that at once while I get these kind of sorted. So Joanne, you want to just go one by one through these?
Through the OTRs?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, so, um, for the an additional Code Inspector, and I did put that in my narrative that I sent to Deb yesterday, I believe. You know, historically, we have had, um, you know, much bigger staff in our, for our inspectors. We've had a resignation, a couple of resignations this past year. One was a Senior Code Inspector, and one was a Code Inspector. So we have vacancies right now that we're trying to fill. But in addition to that, with all of the development, we really do need to stay current with that. And the, an additional Code Inspector position would help us, especially with all of the new development. And we, the replacement inspectors that we've hired, we're very excited about. However, it takes, and Rob Feldewald is on here, and they want to speak to this, but you know, it takes a good two to three years before you can send a building inspector out on the street with full confidence that they can perform the inspections for some of these, some of these huge and complex projects we're seeing. I also want to remind everyone that, you know, the inspection fees, the building permit fees, site plan review fees bring, do bring in quite a bit of revenue, which goes into the general budget, and we sort of work with Steve each year to predict what we think that will be. And we're not seeing a slowdown in development. So this would be, you know, something that we would very much like to put to good use by having an additional Code Inspector. Rob, do you want to add anything to that?
Well, hi. Joanne, you explained it very well, the situation we're in. When I was hired in 2016, the division had four senior code inspectors, and I was a code inspector. That was my introductory position. Um, since then, through resignations or retirements, we have lost um, Senior, Senior Plan Examiner, and we've lost three senior code inspectors. So we have one senior code inspector and two code inspectors. The two code inspectors have been with the division for less than a year and a half now. So as, as Joanne said, it does take several months to a year or maybe two years before we can actually have code inspectors handling larger projects as, as a single person doing that work, inspections, code reviews, things of that nature. So we are shorthanded. We are trying to juggle plan reviews and inspections and bringing the new inspectors up, up through the ranks with us. So any chance that we can increase the, at the base, bringing in more code inspectors, that's probably our best bet. I mean, ideally, we would be able to attract senior code inspectors, but the market looks pretty thin for that. So if there's any way we can bring in code inspectors and start bringing them up from the base, that would help tremendously.
And I just want to add to that, thank you, Rob, that in 2018, we had seven code inspectors and six housing inspectors. And in 2021, we now have four code inspectors and three housing inspectors. And so even if we fill the vacancies we currently have, which are two code inspectors and one housing inspector, we would still be down one code inspector and two housing inspectors from where we were in 2018. And I think we are seeing as much, if not more, development and need for code inspections, so. Any questions on that?
Yeah, any other questions on that one? All right, now I'm getting them on the list here. What was that?
Yeah, I have my hand up, and I think George does as well.
Oh, good. Graham and George.
So Joanne, could you just, I'm sympathetic to this, the numbers you just gave me are pretty eye-opening. So you have two, how many code inspector vacancies do you have right now?
Right now, we have one senior code inspector and one code inspector, so we have two.
And do you know, I guess, what I'm driving at is how, how, how long do you think it'll take to fill those positions? Even if we create or allow for this additional, I'm thinking about, you know, the timing on these positions. So do you have any sense of how long it might take you to fill the existing positions?
Well, I can tell you that we just advertised for a senior code inspector and a code inspector and a housing inspector. And we, um, we got two, two applications for a code inspector, one which didn't qualify. And Rob, correct me if I'm wrong. Oh, we also have a vacant Senior Plan Examiner, which was Rob Feldewald's. So um, the quickest we could bring anybody on is probably six weeks. And that is a really fast timeline for hiring anyone in the city in civil service.
Yeah, understood. Okay, thank you.
George?
Hi, Joanne.
Hi, George.
I, I guess I don't, I'm not clear on why, if we had that many in 2018, even if people resigned or retired, why wouldn't we have the same number of positions now?
Well, I think part, part of it was, um, part of it was the pandemic. I mean, we, we lost positions. We've, we've, you know, we've had a lot of retirements, and I don't know why we're not back up to the 2018 numbers that we had. I think in, as Rob alluded to, um, the, the market is really thin. So we just keep trying to replace what we're losing. And I'd have to really go back and study why we're, why we're down from 2018. Lisa pointed this out to me today. And I don't know, Lisa, if you have a better answer for that.
Well, we've had, I mean, to begin with, we've had seven retirements or people leaving, five retirements, actually, and two people leaving in the last few years. And basically, I think what's sort of been happening is we've been shuffling around the people we do have in building as we're trying to hire new people. So people get promoted to senior, you know, from code inspector to senior code inspector, you know, from plan examiner to a higher position. And we've, you know, we've only really, despite the fact that we've tried hiring, we've only really been able to bring on two new people in the last several years. Or we've brought on people in the last several years and they've left. So I mean, we've, it's really a hiring issue at this point. I would say, I don't know if Rob and Joanne have a different opinion, but we certainly have been trying to hire, so.
I guess, I guess what I'm driving at is why aren't those positions still in your budget?
Yeah.
Even though they're not filled?
Yeah, that, that's a good question, George. And I, I don't think I can answer it right off the top of my head. I'd have to go back and review the budgets over the past several years to see how that happened.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I see Donna.
I think Laura had her hand up before me, but in any case, I think this is really important, and it relates to so many things. Um, uh, building safety, public safety, safety for tenants, as, and also to aesthetics, that if you have more property inspectors, the neighborhoods look nicer as well. So I think, I think this is really important. I'm really surprised that numbers have fallen so much. I wasn't aware of that. So I think this is good, this is a good need to know about, to take very seriously.
Thanks, Donna. Laura?
Yeah, I, I agree with what Donna said. We have heard from residents, from tenants, about conditions in some rental properties, some properties that do not have certificate of compliance. And I am concerned that there's more work than can be handled by the current staff. So I think additional code inspectors are needed. I did have a question. I'm unclear why in the mayor's budget narrative, I see, and I think I asked this the other night, but adding a code inspector April 1, 2022, is that accurate, Joanne? That that's your, your hope to add a code inspector April 1, 2022? And why in April instead of getting someone on board at the start of the year?
Um, I think we were trying to work within the parameters we were given, the percentages. So, you know, in order to hit a 2%, you got to play with the numbers a little bit. So we figured if we could, if, you know, if we could hire the, if we could fill the current vacancies, then we might be able to wait until April in order to bring this new, if the new position were approved. We would bring someone, it'd be much better if we could just, you know, hire now. But again, our biggest problem is we are just not getting people to respond to the applications. So.
Great. People keep moving around in squares. George, is your hand up again, or is that from before? Cynthia?
So point of clarification, Joanne, we already have in the budget, the, the one you've proposed that starts in April. You're asking for one additional on top of that for the entire year. We're also beginning in April.
Lisa, can you answer that? Do you have the budget in front of you?
Um, I think the, my understanding is that the code inspector position did get, the additional inspector position did get approved in the mayor's proposed budget. So, I mean, it was an OTR request before, so we had two others, so we just sent it along.
Okay, so this, this discussion is already actually in the budget. It's no longer in a RAM. Is that correct?
I think that is my understanding.
Well, that certainly is what, what's reflected in the paperwork, yes.
Okay, so, all right, so I can remove this as a RAM because it is in the budget now.
Um, yeah, maybe I can clarify. So the Planning Department asks for this as part, as part of their budget submittal as OTR. We said, sounds good. We put it in it, starting in April, figuring it would take, with the current environment, it would take that long to get someone there. So that's, that's where that came from, at the 4-1 start date. So yeah, it's, uh, that is in the budget. It's just, I think what they're asking is to start it in January instead of April. Is that right, Lisa, Joanne?
Um, yeah, I wasn't aware that it made it into the mayor's budget. But if, yeah, if we could start right away, that would be on January, that would be great.
If we could have that flexibility, that would be.
That would be really helpful.
So I think that's the request, is to move it from 4-1 to 1-1. And I apologize, I thought when these came to me that there were still questions on them from Lisa. They, I thought she was still checking with Joanne on if they still wanted to submit those. So I apologize if I dropped the ball somewhere on these three items, but anyway.
So you're fine. I don't think you did. I think that I, we just wanted to discuss them.
All right, so just to follow up, Steve, will you get us that revised number to fill the gap from January through April?
Yeah, I can, I can put that together for sure. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Well, then I, do I dare ask the question of, are these other two things things in the budget or things you still need? The Events Coordinator and the Land Use Legal Counsel?
So I can give just further clarification there. So the Legal Services was requested at $25,000. We put $7,500 in the budget for that. And then the Event Coordinator position was asked for a full-time. We put in a part-time, so.
Thank you, Steve.
Sure.
So then I guess my question to Joanne is, do you see, are you still making the asks for more than what was put in the budget?
No, I mean, if we can get the 7,500 for outside legal services, we'll make do with that. And the, we really do need a full-time Events Coordinator. But we can start with a half-time person and, and work our way up to a full-time.
So then just to clarify, there was a special events position that was put in the public information technology office. That's not this. Is that correct?
No, it's actually housed in planning.
It's, yeah, it's in planning.
So that is this?
Yeah.
It is this. Yes. Yep.
I'm confused myself.
May I add something to that?
Sure.
Yeah. So, I mean, the, the issue with the special events position is we don't really know how much it will take. It could take two positions. Um, with all this, we don't know. Um, we're, we put it in our budget, you know, as an exploratory thing, but we, we're not sure what it will take to make that position happen. I mean, currently Julie has several staff working on it. Um, so.
We have one yeah, uh, staff member who works probably 75% of her time on it, so.
Yes, but we suspect that it's going to be more than a half-time position. Um, and, you know, the issue is what's, how do we want to scale it if we only have enough staff for halftime?
Okay, we see Rob and I see Cynthia, but I'm, I think, I guess I just want final clarification so we know exactly what we're doing here. So I'm going to go back to all three of what we thought was a request above the mayor's budget. So code inspector is just a request to have that January, start in January instead of April. And Steve's going to get us the number for that. Okay. Legal counsel, you're okay with 7,500 and are not making an official request for more?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll take that off the list. Events coordinator was put in as half-time. Are you asking for it to be full-time as a request above the mayor's budget?
I would say yes.
Yeah, I would say yes too.
Okay, so I think Steve, we're going to need numbers for that as well because this 5690 seems high for halftime. Okay.
That's definitely high. Yeah, so I'll, I will put those numbers together.
Okay, so I'm going to take out the land use and I'm just going to leave those other two with a placeholder, knowing that Steve will give us different numbers. Okay. Rob and then Cynthia.
Yeah, thanks. Um, yeah, I'd also endorse the idea of trying to work in a full-time event coordinator. You know that, um, the reason we heard about this last night is because Julie had been playing a big role uh, through her office in coordinating special event activities. And we have, as a body, have been hearing from her about the stresses it's putting on the city and including, um, the, uh, as Joanne noted, I think in her, um, narrative about uh, impact from uh, additional requirements by the state and federal regulations around events. Um, you know, thi- this is something that's been coming for a while and we really need to be better prepared for it. But I guess a question I have, Joanne, for you now, if this is going to sit more solidly in your area, um, what are the opportunities we might have around rethinking how uh, this is paid for? So if it's, if it's only in, if the mechanism is only in permits, are we charging enough for that work? Uh, is there some other way or revenue stream that we could take on as a result of having to do all this work? Um, I'm just, I guess I'm just trying to figure out if there are ways to help us here. You allude to that in your narrative, but I wasn't clear on what that actually meant.
Um, I don't know that we'll, well, I think that's something we want to look at and I, and, um, you know, Julie has done a tremendous amount of work looking at this. And, um, we know that part of the problem is, um, the expense of holding these special events. And we would like them to be somewhat self-sustaining. Not all of them will be. But, um, the city has for a long time now, uh, put in our own resources, um, which can be substantial at times. We would like to be able, particularly in these large events, um, figure out a mechanism so that they can cover the costs. Um, and I think that's part of what we need to look at. Um, and just as a, um, point of information, um, fees across the board, I think we need to look at in our department. Um, so yes, that is something we'll look at. It's something on our work plan. And, um, I don't have a ready answer about how to do that, but we're certainly going to look at it.
Maybe. Sorry. Sorry, I just wanted to, to reaffirm, uh, Rob's point. I think it's a good one. And I think uh, almost ironically, we have not had the staff to assess fees. So it's sort of like that, that could be one of the first tasks we give to the new staff members. You know, figure out what fees we should be charging for these special events, uh, in order to bring revenue to the city.
Yeah, and if I could just close too with the, um, I, endorsing the idea of having a full-time position also gets you someone who might be in a, uh, the, the, a better role to do one of the things, uh, you mentioned at the end of your narrative, Joanne, which is to educate event planners about what they need. And, uh, I think that's a huge part of, we can be better at articulating what their costs are going to need, just need to be to support the work that we need to do to make sure the events are safe. Um, that's huge right there. And I think that's an endorsement for a full-time role.
Great. I think I had Cynthia and then George. And Lisa, I see Lisa's hand is up. Did you want to add something or was that?
Oh, um, I, I think Rob said most of what I was going to say, but I did want to mention it, Joanne. We've had preliminary conversations, correct, about Proche County Tourism Board about, about using room tax dollars for this too. So that is one idea, although we need to really fill out a whole, you know, program and, and, um, revenue.
So we would, yeah, we definitely would like to tap into the county's resources, whether they're human or, um, cash contributions, because a lot of our events are regional events. Um, but the city seems to, to carry that a financial burden um, out of our coffers, so.
Great. Cynthia and then George.
Uh, yeah, Joanne, Robyn, and the mayor have all touched on what I was going to mention. And I'm also thinking about the benefits to, if we look at this position to handle broader permitting responsibilities, thinking about the benefits also to the DPW with regards to sidewalk permits, um, mobile vending permits, all of the other permitting aspects that, that also need this sort of attention. So uh, it could be shared between departments too.
George?
Not at 20 hours though.
Not at, not at 20 hours, not at all.
George?
You did.
Sorry. Um, I think we spoke about this last night. Um, we've got so many needs. Um, and most of these events, if, correct me if I'm wrong, are downtown. And I agree that a lot of them are regional. But it seems like the downtown businesses should be um, asked to contribute to the cost of this position as well as the county. Um, because because we we have a lot of things we need to do.
I, I think that's a very good point, George. And, you know, we do, um, collaborate on a lot of things with the Downtown NHTCA Alliance, so, um, we can certainly, um, discuss with them, at least maybe a partial contribution.
If, if these events are important to them, I would think they would be eager to contribute.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, we can talk offline a little bit. A lot of, uh, they do already contribute quite a bit in different ways, but I can break that down for you at a future date.
Thank you.
Rob, is that what you were going to clarify? The, the bid money? Is that what you were going to talk about? Yeah.
Yeah, it was more specifically, I think I remember somewhere in the budget that we actually make a contribution to DIA, but I wasn't sure what that was in connection to. Right, I'm sorry, I don't have it. My.
Steve may know offhand. I know that we do make a contribution.
Oh, yeah, we, um, we do make a contribution. It's $61,000. It's been in the budget for many years. I think originally it was to help get the director uh, a larger salary, uh, way back when. And then it just kind of evolved into an annual contribution.
I feel like at some point in time, we had a conversation that that's like the city's similar to a, like paying into the bid. I think. I have a vague recollection of that, but. George, is your hand up again?
Nope.
Cynthia, you are going to switch topics on us? Okay, so let's just close out if there are any additional questions on the events coordinator. And again, this request is to, um, make it full-time instead of part-time. There's a part-time one included in the budget. Okay. Cynthia? Is this a question for Joanne or are you going totally rogue?
It is under the department.
Perfect.
Okay, so, um, in looking at the, the table of, um, authorized personnel, it indicates a sustainability planner. In the narrative on page five, it talks about a planning sustainability planner. Is that a new position? Is that this position that we've already have? Um, it, it's just under the title. It says layoffs, reductions, increases. So I don't know if it's a new position and if it is, um, if it's actually adequately represented in the table on, on page 108, this one.
Uh, it is a new position. Uh, it's a new full-time sustainability planner.
Underneath, uh, Louise?
Yes.
Okay. Am I not seeing it in the, in the table, Steve, on page 108 of the recommended budget? Oh, okay, I see it. It's the, I have a director of standard, okay, I see.
Yeah, it's down.
I'm going to save it. Okay, got it. So that's a new position. Thank you. And this, um, just for clarification, this position is to help with much of the implementation with regards to the green building code and the presentation of the electrification program that Louise is bringing forward.
Um, y- yes, in part, but it's also, um, to help with the, um, greenhouse gas um, study and the, um, the, the, the updates to some of the work that was done, um, prior to the Green New Deal that we were going to, uh, update. The greenhouse gas inventory, I think there was going to be a fleet inventory. There's quite a few, um, tasks that were um, outlined when we brought Louise on. So that's to help with those as well.
Okay, so actually, this is sort of, um, a net increase of a halftime position, correct? Because we used to have, uh, we had the director and then we had a part-time position that we shared with the town.
That's correct.
And so we're actually, it's a net halftime increase.
That's exactly right, Cynthia. Thank you for pointing that out.
Great. Thank you.
Rob, is your hand up?
Yes. I just wanted to follow up on the chat message from Cynthia about the senior plan examiner. Um, I do not have the budget in front of me. Uh, but, uh, the, the intent is that we, uh, so that's a vacancy request to fill that position. Um, so I'm not sure you would, you would thought that it's not included in the 2022 budget? Again, I don't have the budget in front of me.
It is, it is listed as not funded in the budget.
Not funded. Um, and what we, we put in a vacancy request that was approved. Um, and we will have to work with our numbers to see if we can, in fact, uh, work the numbers so that we can bring on, so we can fill that position.
How does that happen if it's been unfunded in the budget? Does it need to be added now?
Sorry, I'm just looking down our list. Um.
Yeah. I think it does need to be added back. We, you know, things changed since we did our budget.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, and then, and then we needed to have that, that position was missing. Um, and from Skip, from Rob's, from Rob's promotion. And then, so we need to, we need to fill it. I think it was somewhat of an oversight and also just as the dust settled, after Rob got promoted, we realized we needed to fill that position.
Okay. Um, so I think that if I understand the process, that will need to come back as a, as a RAM request.
I think you're correct.
Okay.
I'm not, yeah.
Why don't you take a look at it and let us know? And then you can submit it as an official one. You can sit with Steve and make sure everything that you're, that you need is in there.
Yes, we will do that.
Okay, great. Any other questions while we have the planning team here? Dixon?
Uh, how, how are you doing on, on planners? Um, so we still have a lot of the comprehensive plans implemented amongst the, I mean, you gave us a whole list of priorities for 2021. And do you have the planning staff you need to accomplish that and what you want to do in 2022?
Oh, it's a really good question. You know, um, a lot of, we did a lot of shuffling uh, during the pandemic when other staff members were furloughed. Uh, and so we are, we have, although we still have, um, planners on the books, um, some of the planners have shifted to other roles, so it's not as much planning um, as it, um, as it once was. So part of the, um, hope is that if we are able to hire someone to do the special events, uh, they can take over a lot of the job responsibilities that one of our planners is doing now, which is about 75% of her time. And, um, uh, she was working, um, you know, pretty steadily on the comprehensive plans. Uh, so we really need to, um, distribute some of the, uh, responsibilities we picked up, uh, during COVID, during the pandemic in order to get our planners back to planning. There is also a, uh, another planner position, um, uh, approved. And we did have, unfortunately, um, we had a planner resign, uh, which was, uh, a great loss for our department, so.
And we have a vacant senior planner position as well.
And we have a vacant, yes, that's right.
Okay, so two vacancies. Two planner vacancies and, and Jennifer, who's been doing, um, special events instead of planning. Okay, thanks.
That's correct. And of course, Megan, um, Wilson was promoted into the zoning administrator position. Um, and so she's, it's very closely related. It's always been in our plan to, um, to be more, um, in sync zoning and planning, but still took some of her talents away as well.
All right. Any other questions for the planning group? Cynthia, then Laura.
So, um, so I, you're, you have a vacant senior planner and a vacant planner. And all I, I see funded, one senior planner at 40 hours and one senior planner at 35 hours. And that's, uh, just confirming that, that that's the staffing that you're going with, or are you making requests above that? You're, you're only funded for two planners at this point?
Yeah, that, that's what we're.
Yeah, okay. Um, so my question, um, having to do with, I made a, a request for, uh, an addition for $20,000 for either in. either in contingency or capital for possible hiring of a consultant to look at our flood management and zoning to see if we may be able to qualify and participate in the FEMA. It's escaping my mind, but basically a registry where we where we certify that we've met certain recommendations of FEMA and allows our property owners to get reduced premiums and flood insurance. I did send an email and I have not had a chance to speak personally with staff about it, but I did put it out there as a topic for us to review and something to consider. And yes, it's the community rating system. We already have, I think, we probably qualify for several points already, but we need to apply and register for those points. So this would serve to benefit our property owners with reduced premiums.
I see Seth.
Yeah, I just, I want to second what Cynthia is saying because I think this flood rate issue is going to be a major, major deal for property owners and the flats next year. I mean, right now, I've just heard all kinds of rumors and a lot of it is just, I mean, there's a lot of gossip going around about what we're going to be facing, but I think it's likely that we'll see some pretty significant premiums. Enough that it's like a pretty big dent in housing affordability for the city. Because essentially, it's going to apply to anybody who has a mortgage. That could be landlords. It could be single family homeowners. So I think anything we can do to to sort of recognize this and get ahead of it, whether it's, you know, pursuing the community rating system that Cynthia is talking about, I think, I think we we need to be taking this seriously.
Right, and then.
Go ahead, no Cynthia.
Yeah, so my my thought is, you know, I just put a number out there. I think it's actually pretty high. But we could hire a consultant to review our zoning, to review the programs that we have in place and recommend what we apply for and what we might need to, you know, modify in terms of our zoning that would meet the requirements for the community rating system and thereby achieve a higher level of points. Right now, there is not a municipality in Tompkins County that participates in this. I know that Scott Doyle at the county has been working on this for quite some time and he is our our area resident specialist on this and can advise us in this process. But I just thought with the work level of our planning staff, it would be easier to hire a consultant to assist us.
Why don't we, I know that Joanne hasn't had a chance to really look at that or process that yet. Why don't we, you know, at some point, we'll just pick a night where we sort out all of these different things so we can have a more in depth discussion on that. So I know included Joanne in that email, right, that you sent out Cynthia, right?
Yes, and I I appreciated it, Cynthia, and I I have not had a chance to follow up with, I know there was a workshop last week on this and Rob Feldewall was involved in Matt Sladuski. So I think if we can come together to have a more of a plan, solid plan.
Laura, did I see your hand?
Yeah, in response to this, we might also want to make sure to loop in Mike Thorne when we're talking about FEMA and the flood maps. Seth's right, there's a lot of concern by residents, homeowners about the flood insurance and the increases that may be coming. And is there any way of addressing that upfront? So I think it would be good to to wrap Mike into that discussion as well. I did raise my hand before because I had a question about ARP funds. And specifically, if, as I'm reading it, ARP funds are available to be used for three of the proposals made by Louise. Are we talking about those proposals as well? Is it certain that the electricity feasibility assessment, the community choice aggregation and the EV charging stations will all be funded through ARP? Steve, do you know?
Excuse me, that, yeah, that's the plan at this point in time that they would be funded by ARPA funds.
Okay, great. That's helpful. I just wanted to confirm that.
Any other questions for planning? I know a number of the other questions that we sort of slotted that maybe would be helpful to be answered by planning were also related more to capital projects and we do have capital projects on one of our nights. So I think what I might do is kind of hold those. We do have sort of a big grouping of community services agencies and we have, I think we have people waiting if if we have any questions for them as well. So if it's okay with everyone, what we'll do is kind of close just planning, planning department for now and then we'll make sure we get some of the questions that were asked about some of those capital projects where I think a little bit more complicated. So we'll give staff some more time to answer some of those capital project related questions and the ARPA project related questions. And we'll talk about that. Let me look at my list when we have. Capital projects are Thursday, the 21st, so we can talk about all of them on that night.
So I should be prepared to address questions on the 21st of these, the information that you've asked for.
Yep.
Okay.
I see Rob's hands still up.
Oh, Rob, I'm sorry. I I am having a hard time seeing hands raised. Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say both Carol Marion, the electrical inspector, and I are here if there were any questions about the budget line item for another electrical inspector. So, you know, if if that was still a question, we can answer that.
I don't think that's a question, but I will see if I will open the floor. Does not look like it.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
I'm sorry, is that a new request? For an electrical inspector?
That's that's in the mayor's budget.
Okay, oh, no, got it.
I just didn't know if anyone had questions about that position.
No.
Doesn't appear like it.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Ready to switch over to community services? Yes, okay, great. So what I, what we have here, I know I see representatives from a few, we're moving them over. I don't know that anyone had any specific questions for, I see HSC, I see Wharton Studio. Is that everybody? Now everybody's bounced around in my Hollywood square. It's not too everybody is anymore. Okay, there we go. So I guess first I will ask if there are any questions related to Human Services Coalition and Wharton Studio because we have representatives from those organizations with us. So thank you for your patience as we worked through the other topics. I know I don't know, Kathy, as you are about to retire, have you figured out how to explain the quadratic equation that gets us to understand why we have the amount of money we have for human service agencies? You got that down yet? There were some questions about that yesterday, so I don't know if you want to do the for dummies version of explaining that to all of us?
Yeah, I couldn't, I maybe Steve can explain the equation that gets the percentage of the extra percentage of the sales tax and a percentage of that which is used to support human service agencies and what we put in a request for to use specifically ARP funds, I guess, for is to help bring the agencies just back up to where they would have been, there not been such a a sharp decrease in the sales tax
Right.
last year. So that was where that amount came from.
Great. And those were both included in the mayor's budget. So.
Thank you.
So are there any questions related to that slice of the budget?
And it is about 18, 19 agencies, different agencies.
Cynthia?
I realize I should have asked this when Joanne was still here. Is this folded in with the $10,000 continuum of care plan? Does that also apply to HSC or is this specific to planning department?
I don't know.
That is separate. Yeah, I think that is separate from the HSC that actually came through the planning department and and more accurately through the Ithaca Urban Renewal Agency. So Nels sits in on the continuum of care and and brought that budget request forward.
Okay, and then, okay, I'm sorry, I Kathy, I always associate you with a continuum of care, so I folded that together in my brain, so I apologize.
Right, their hat. Thank you, those hats.
Any other questions for Kathy? Well, good to see you, Kathy. Thank you for hanging out.
Everybody. And Deb and I are just gonna do nothing but hang out next year.
That's right. That's correct. We are both. That's what I said. Someone asked me a question. I'm like, no, no, next October, I'll probably be in Bermuda or somewhere. I won't be doing this. Bye, Kathy. Thank you so much.
Bye, bye.
For all your years.
Thanks, Kathy.
I see.
Kathy, we will, and we will see Kathy next year. She keeps trying to retire, but we're not gonna let her. So we will, we will see you next year.
Not leaving a forwarding address this time.
She's tried to retire like three times. Let her go.
The danger of being too useful. We can't let her go.
That's right. Okay, any questions for, I think we have Wharton Studio, Friends of Stewart Park. I see Rick. And is that INHS also? I can't tell who's there. Everyone keeps bouncing around. Any other questions for other those, some of those other groups that were funded in this community services bunch? George?
Yeah, I I've lost my my numbers for the Wharton and Friends of Stewart Park. So could could they just give us a a brief statement about what they're doing and and how their request compares to last year's request?
Yes, I can give it a shot. Thank you all. Diana had to leave to another Wharton program that she's hosting, so I'm hoping her out here. So it was a Wharton Studio Museum request. I mean, as you all know, we work we work together on with with the city on our park revitalization effort and we have we did raise the $120,000 for the winter bathrooms, which which we think of as the first phase of the Wharton Studio Park Center, what we're calling it, which is essentially that front portion, the north lake facing portion of the what you might think of as the DPW maintenance building, we think of as the Wharton Studio Building. So the request Diana had submitted, I mean, as some of you know, and Deb was in the photograph a few, a few years ago, I guess, three or four years ago, Senator Amara came and gave a state, a big state check for $450,000 to to go towards the creation of that center. The money seems to have gotten lost in, I don't know, the the years since then, we have talked to Anna Kellis about this and she's looking into that. But there was a request that Diana put in for $500,000 towards the development of this and and the recommend recommended funding, as I understand it now, is $100,000 and what that would be used for would be the continued kind of design development and construction document plans, also development of a business plan for this facility so that we could answer your questions more thoughtfully and our questions about how this would function, how it would run. But and as we see it, it's a an important building historically. We just just got a grant that some of you know about, you, all of you may not know, a small grant to look at the nomination of the, do a historic landscape study for the park. So it's an important historic building and we would like also to just create a a welcoming place, summer and winter year round, where people could, in the winter, get out of the cold, have a beautiful view of the lake, learn about the history of the park and of the silent film history, of course, and then the ecology of the lake. And have a place where people could get information, docents, ideally volunteers there, and we would love to have a place where people could get refreshments as well. So it's all working towards this idea of creating kind of a public face in the park on weekend hours now. When the carousel is closed, there's no there's no real place to go. There will be bathrooms in the winter now, so we'd like to expand that and really create a a kind of a not a visitor's center really, but just a a public gathering place that could be rented for special events to and a terrace. I mean, as you know, we have we have really thought about that area a lot. We think it's really important historically and we think we put a lot of investment into the Picnic Pavilion. It's a really beautiful place now. A lot of that was tourism funding. So we think we can successfully fundraise for that project if we have if we have the documents that we need and a really solid, good cost estimate. So that's what the the request is for. I mean, the larger request would have taken us well beyond that, but we're delighted with what the mayor has included in the budget. And we're not asking for anything additional, just to be clear.
So is the request for $100,000?
The request was five. What we were told is it's 100 and that's, and we're certainly happy with that.
But there's $400,000 that, there's $400,000 in state money out there somewhere that you're not sure where it is.
Well, we're working on that. Diana has been doggedly working on that for a number of years. We had a Zoom meeting with Anna last week and she's digging into it again, and she said she's done this for other clients where it's, I mean, it it may be lost in bureaucracy and politics and just the, you know, the obviously challenging funding situation, but we are certainly working on that, yes. No guarantees that will happen. But so we are, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go, no, I interrupted you. I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, we we're confident that it's a project that the community would support and you know, it won't be easy, but we've done some things that aren't easy and we think we can achieve that over time and this will certainly help us to do that.
So I mean, this, I I still think of this as the DPW building.
Yeah.
The city owns it. So if if your plan comes to fruition and and you rent and the place is rented for events, would would you want to keep the money? Or would that money go to the city?
Well, that that's what I had mentioned, that part of the kind of design development process would be also thinking about a business plan. And so I don't know the answer to that, but I would imagine that if it was rented through the current mechanism, the the youth bureau, then the city would rent it like they do other pavilions and keep the money. And that's not for us. We want the facility to be there and to be enjoyed. And I just want to really be clear, I think you know this, George, and I think others know, but we're not talking about taking over the whole building. It's really what was the old veranda. It's a very narrow area on the north face where currently the the boat club. I'm sorry, not the boat club, the day camp uses that for Uh, I'm sorry, not the boat club, the day camp uses that for storage. So. This funding, the first phase of any project would be to build an addition onto the back of the day camp. Uh, the picnic pavilion where the day camp currently operates from, so that that function can move over there and this building. Uh, this portion of the building to be opened up for this use. So that really would be any the required first phase. And that's about a currently about a two hundred thousand dollar um unheated addition to the back of that building. That we do have plans for there. Uh, and that would be part of the project is to uh, they're conceptual, they're. We think solid, we've met with the youth bureau, but they need, we need a, you know, a bid set basically, so we really know what we're fundraising for.
Yeah, I I did know that you weren't asking for the whole building, so thank you.
No, we're different.
Right. And so, yeah, so just to clarify, there is a hundred thousand dollars that the mayor has included for. This and you're and there there is not a request for anything additional.
No.
Right.
Oh, we're very. Pleased with that and um, no, we're definitely not asking for anything.
Right. Cynthia, is your hand up from before or is it new?
Uh, no, my question is, um, I've scanned every document. The only place I see mention of this is in the uh PowerPoint presentation. I'm not finding it either in the narrative or in the uh mayor's proposed budget. So or mayor's recommended budget. So I I don't even know where. I didn't know anything about the hundred thousand because I didn't see any number associated with this. Um, and I really wasn't looking at the PowerPoint as as the basis for the budget. So can somebody point this to me? Or point me to where this is because um, either I'm misspelling it or. I'm looking in the wrong place.
It's in the capital project list.
Okay, I I did look at the capital projects. I I looked up Stuart and I didn't find it there. I looked up Wharton.
Probably would have been under Wharton.
Yeah.
Am I misspelling? So what what page? It's the sixteen page document. Which page is it?
Page one oh two in the budget.
Yeah.
One oh two in the budget?
Schedule of Authorized Capital Projects. That's what I was referring to earlier when making note of the ARP funds. But Wharton Studio Museum is in there and that, Steve, correct me if I'm not reading this right. But it looks like that one hundred thousand dollars is coming from ARP as well.
Yes, that's correct.
Thanks.
Oh, I see that there. And it is in the capital budget present, the the sixteen page document?
I don't know which document you're referring to, the sixteen page. I'm not sure. From the capital project night?
Right, the the capital project.
Yeah, I think it came in later, as I recall. I believe, is that right?
The capital request updated summary nine twenty eight.
Yeah, I think I added that later, which is part why it was in ARPA.
This one?
This is possible Steve didn't get that in time for that sheet, but it it is in the budget.
Okay, so can we get an updated one of this then? And I'll throw this out.
Sure.
Okay.
And did you have a question or?
No, I I I was just trying to, I had no awareness of this because I hadn't seen it in. The presentation document, so I honestly had no idea what anybody was talking about. So thank you.
George, is that a new hand up? You're muted.
Um, so I'm I'm slow, I'm sorry. So this hundred thousand dollars is ARPA money? Am I understanding that correctly?
Uh, yes, that's correct. Yes.
Thank you. I'll put my hand down.
Laura?
Thanks, Deb. I'm shifting to a a different question on the community services, service agencies.
Is it for Rick?
No, it is not.
Okay, so are we good to go with Rick? Okay, seems like it. Thank you, Rick. Tell Diana, thank you. We know she waited.
Yeah, thank you very much, everyone.
Okay.
Thanks, Rick.
What I want to do is take care if there are any questions related to the people who are here. So is this related to Reach, Laura?
No, it's not.
Okay, I guess what I'll ask is, do we have questions for Reach? Because we do have a representative here. I'm just trying to be mindful of the people who are present, so we can release them before. We get into other things. Graham and then Donna.
Thank you, Deb. Um, and Tatiana, thanks for um your patience waiting till we got to this. So I was just, um. I know there's um, I think two hundred thousand was in the mayor's uh presentation uh for Reach. And I I was looking at it um under the capital, the same pages we were just talking about as um, I guess COVID revenue. Shortfall. So I'm kind of confused about what this is covering um in terms of the context of the Reach operation. And and why it's kind of in capital, I guess. And again, that question about whether this is covered by the ARPA funding. Or whether this is, how this is uh fitting into the city budget. It might be more of a question for Steve or the mayor, I guess, also.
It sounds like.
Um, I can't speak to the uh latter question, but um. This is to help Reach as an organization um get a little bit more on track with. Uh, obtaining or securing our sustainability efforts. Um, if you, I don't know if you know much about Reach, but we are a five oh one C three nonprofit organization. Um, we're a medical practice that specializes in treatment of substance use disorders. As well as provides primary care, behavioral health, um HIV testing and treatment, Hep C testing and treatment. And outreach services. Um, of course, as with everyone, um COVID. And the twenty twenty calendar year was extremely hard on us as we went to navigate. Not only the services that we are providing and how to continue providing those services in a safe manner. And make sure that people that did not have access to healthcare or um, you know, health services were still being reached out to. So we did implement an outreach team in which we were going out into the community and providing um telehealth services. Facilitated as telehealth services through an outreach crew um with the ability to induct and with. Through telemed, induct people into treatment. We've been able to expand into over forty counties in New York State. But the bulk of our operations are in Tompkins County and in the Ithaca area. As we are able to deploy outreach teams to meet people where they're at and facilitate telehealth appointments. Um, we, like I said, experienced a lot of hardship with COVID. Um, not having people on site, not being able to, um, you know, making sure that we are ramping up our. Staff so that we're able to have people go out into outreach services, making sure that we have adequate technology and resources. Um, that was extremely important for us to continue care, but now we're looking into our twenty twenty two year. And hoping that we're able to gain some funding so that we are able to put more money towards our operational expenses. Um, as a nonprofit organization, we're very much grant funded. Um, our population that we serve is primarily Medicaid patients and the revenue that we receive from Medicaid does not allow us to be sustainable. So we have to look into a lot of grant funding. In order to use grant funding, you know, you are subject to. Certain parameters and deliverables under the grant, but the money that we really need is not just to expand services or carry out special projects. It's really to fund the work that we're currently doing and making sure that salaries are covered, making sure that we have the equipment that we need. And that people are able to take time off and, you know, have adequate resources and. Maintain their mental health and wellbeing while working at Reach. So that is what that money is going to.
Thanks. So so I guess Steve or the mayor, so it, as I said, it was, it's listed as COVID revenue shortfall. So this is ARPA funding. I mean, this is the two hundred thousands coming from the ARPA funding. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, and we put it in uh the capital, just as I mentioned last night, that we're trying to keep those separate. So you could see where they were coming from. So that's, that's why it's in there.
Yeah, my, it might have been good to have a tag of ARPA or something on that sheet, just so that it's clear what's, you know, where where the sources are from. But that's hindsight is always twenty twenty, right?
Oh, I think there is at the top of that.
It's a column.
It's a column there. It's federal ARPA funds at the top of the column, I believe, on that.
Oh, okay, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, they're sorted.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Sure.
George, is that a new hand?
Yes.
I'm sorry, and Donna was ahead of you, I believe.
Fine. She's always ahead of me.
So Tatiana, you, you started by saying this was. This this money would help with your sustainability practice, but I think you meant that differently than we're used to talking about that. You're talking about keeping the clinic.
Yeah, organizational sustainability.
Talking about making it greener or anything.
No, not green initiatives, organizational sustainability.
All right, now, did Reach itself receive some federal stimulus or relief money due to COVID?
We did receive some PPP loans um at the beginning of twenty twenty, right after um when they were first released. We did receive some.
Okay, but that wasn't sufficient?
Well, like I said, one of the initiatives that we did implement um during the twenty twenty calendar year. So when the PPP funding came out, it's before we were full fledged providing outreach services as well. Um, so there's a lot of staff that that includes. Um, we also have signed on to additional grant funding. But like I said earlier, there are so many deliverables that come with grants that sometimes the funding doesn't cover all of the staff. Sometimes the funding doesn't cover all of the materials, um but you still have to deliver the product that you signed on to deliver. And so this also helps us maintain some of that um staff revenue as well of operational revenue. That you're not really able to secure under every grant.
Okay, so um have uh, will Tompkins County and some of the other counties that you serve. Uh, also give some uh funnel some of their ARPA money to you?
Um, we are pretty certain that we will be receiving some money from Tompkins County.
Do you know how much you've, how much have you asked for?
Um, we are receiving, I think it's just over two hundred thousand dollars for outreach services. And then we're also receiving around sixty four thousand for Wellness Court Case Manager. That position has not been hired.
Okay, um. And I suppose. Is there, um, I I'm most concerned that money coming through the city. Well, actually, it's. I was about to say this, but I think it's might be mistaken. I was about to say that money coming from the city should be used to serve the city. But this is, but we're just funneling a gift from the federal government. So we're just funneling federal money. So I think my reasoning is mistaken there. Um.
And I can say that as far as our patient panel, um over forty percent of our patients are Tompkins County residents. Most of which live within the city of Ithaca. We also, before even having these allowances under telehealth. Um, people from all over the state travel to Ithaca to receive services because Reach is one of the few. And far between low threshold harm reduction focused substance use disorder um practices that people feel comfortable and safe coming to. And so Ithaca itself is a huge hub for this kind of care.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Now, George.
Uh, thank you. Um, Tatiana, could could you please tell me? Um, how many uh people you serve? How big your staff is? Is it nurses and doctors? And can can you tell me what harm reduction? Actually is?
Yeah, um, I'll start with harm reduction. So harm reduction truly is the practice of reducing harm. Now, as I mentioned earlier, Reach specializes in the treatment of substance use disorders, specifically opioid use disorder. And harm reduction, when we're talking about substance use disorders, opioid use disorders. Means that we are reducing barriers to access to treatment for the individuals that need help. We're taking away the punitive measures that they might face. We're making it easy for people to come in and receive the services that they need. Rather than trying to fit them inside in some sort of box um as far as what treatment models are out there. Um, all of the practices at Reach are evidence based and current within the research as far as treating substance use disorders. Um, and harm reduction in this space is truly ensuring that people not only have the medication that they need. But that we are looking at social determinants of health, helping people navigate to services. And ensuring that people have feel less stigma when they're coming in for treatment. And so you have a staff that's caring and compassionate and um treats people with dignity as they access and navigate through healthcare. And then, oh, God.
Your your staff, what's that made up of?
Yep, um, so our staff, we have a small staff of just under forty people. That includes um nursing staff, nurse practitioners, um our providers. And we also have administrative staff and outreach staff. Um, we are also the case management arm for the Ithaca Lead Project, the law assisted. Um, law enforcement assisted diversion. And so we have case managers under Lead as well.
So you're located in the city of Ithaca?
Yep, we're located at one thousand one West Seneca.
And um. I forget what my, oh, how how many people do you serve?
Um, since we opened in two thousand and eighteen, we have had over four thousand patients come through our doors. We currently have approximately twenty two patients that are active in treatment today. And by active, I mean that they have had a visit or prescription for server for treatment. Within the night last ninety days.
Really? That seems like a small number to me.
I think when you're thinking about the size of our practice and limited location, um, you know. It 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 feels pretty big. We see over fifty new patients each month. And we're also netting around two point three. Um, an average, I should say, of two point three visits per hour, which is pretty well. Um, competitive with productivity measures for healthcare services.
Thank you.
Donna?
Your staff is, the number of your total staff?
Just under forty. It's around thirty five to forty people.
Donna?
Are you able to say how many of your clients um have received COVID vaccinations?
Um, I can't give you an exact number off the top of my head, but I should say that one thing that we did do with um. Um, COVID and our outreach services is that we also have hosted quite a few COVID vaccination clinics within the community. Um, and places where people typically, you know, are underserved or um. People that are facing homelessness or housing insecurity where they're congregated. And so we have deployed COVID vaccination within the community. And then we also, of course, provide COVID vaccines. It's just a regular service um for our patient panel.
Was that it? I, Donna might be. Are you good, Donna? Was that it?
Well, I I don't, I think the answer is she can't tell me.
Um, if you give me a a moment, I can look up the exact number of people that we.
Okay, I can follow up. That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I I will just add their work to vaccinate folks to go out into the street and to vaccinate folks who uh otherwise wouldn't have access. Uh, a big part of the reason I included funding this year and and their, you know, their sustained outreach to folks who are living on the street. And spending a lot of time outside uh is is also, I think, what makes this a smart investment. I mean, we've seen time and again that that sort of upstream. Investment lowers community wide costs. Community wide costs from ambulance rides, sorry, my camera's off. From, from nine one one calls, ambulance rides to emergency medical care. Uh, doing this kind of investment pays dividends community wide. It was hard to draw a direct line back to the city's budget. That's why I thought the ARPA funds were a good match.
Great. Any other questions for reach? Graham?
Not really a question, just a clarification to Tanya. I mean, I think this is a great program. It's more. The questions I have, and I think my colleagues have is, you know, the proportion of, of, of funding paid by the city, given the, the. As you said, the tremendous service this is providing, which we just try to try and make sure for. City taxpayers that we're, we're supporting an appropriate level of, of providing an appropriate level of support. So it's not a question of. For me, anyway, of how valuable this service is.
Yeah, thank you for that.
It's totally fair. And we, we, we generally, as a practice, don't share what the overall request was unless the. Uh, um, service provider does or the department head does, because we don't want to overly confuse things. But I will say that this is. What the Capital Project Review Committee recommended was a fifth or, or less. Than what reach is seeking in funds. So I know that they're out there looking for, you know. Help from the county, from the state, from the federal government as well. So this is not the city filling the entire hole.
Great. Any other questions for reach? Okay, thank you so much, Tatiana. Thanks for waiting. Now Laura had another question about something else.
Yeah, thanks, Deb. Is there anyone else in the waiting room who we should be turning to?
Does not appear so.
Okay, thanks. I had a question about community outreach worker. The proposal in the mayor's budget is for sixty five thousand. No increase from twenty twenty one and it's. I, I believe we have two community outreach workers currently. The county also contributes to the program as I'm recalling from our discussions last budget cycle last year. Uh, the work of the community outreach workers. Seems to be increasing. And, uh. So I have a question about whether we should be funding a third community outreach worker. The catchment area for the community outreach workers is mostly downtown in the flats. And, um. I wonder if there's need for more service of this kind.
I don't know if the mayor wants to take. That.
Yeah, I'm, I'm certainly open to it. I mean, I think that. It is certainly the model on which we are building. The alternative unarmed response in the new Department of Public Safety. So we could view those funds set aside for that as, as an expansion of the outreach worker program. But we could also begin that discussion with. Um, all the various partners. So you mentioned the county, but this is also a partnership with the. Uh, the. Uh, family and children's services as well as the Downtown of the Alliance. So we could all pull together and see if a third position makes sense for next year. I, I can try and assemble that meeting. Soon, but I don't, I don't know for sure that we'd have an answer by the end of this, this budget session. But let me check in on Tuesday. Tuesday, I've got a standing meeting with some of those partners. Let me check in with them there. And see if they've been eyeing and expansions. As everybody, I think, probably knows, Tammy Baker, who is the, the founding. Staff person of the outreach worker program has just accepted a new position in the community, which is really exciting. But I don't know if that means that they, I know they're seeking to replace her. I'm not sure where they are in, in terms of adding a third person. So. Let me follow up on that.
Thank you. I think that would be good and, and certainly does follow up on the reimagining. Public safety and the unarmed response that we're talking about. So thanks.
Yeah, I love that. I, I love that program. It's been really, you know, not without its frustrations, but it, it's really helped. Us at downtown quite a lot.
Thank you.
Great. So there was a couple of questions in the chat from people. I think. We talked about. And I don't know, Savante, you wanna? Say this again, because I think people didn't hear. So we're gonna have, we had a lot of questions about South Side, and then we've also had questions about. Both, um, Black Hands Universal and Unbroken Promise, right? Are we gonna try to have them? Come a different night? Do we want to maybe send whatever information? Would it perhaps be helpful if they could put something together on paper and send around to council ahead of time?
Yeah, that's part of what we asked them to do, given that there were more questions about them. So everybody remembers that we shifted away from big presentations to council during budget season. Because a lot of times we'd spend an hour on presentations, no questions, and we didn't get time to dig into the questions we did have. But it does seem like these organizations, because there are more questions, it would make sense to do presentations. So. Uh, we're working with them to, to pick that date. Uh, I'll try and get them to, to send their pitches and presentations in advance, so council can see them in advance. And I'll make sure that they see all the questions that councils has asked already. I, I'm hoping that that can be possible next week. I don't want to leave it to the very, very end of the budget process, like the, the twenty eighth. Um, so I'm hoping we could maybe do it next, next Wednesday. But again, I'll double back. Sorry, next Thursday.
Yeah, I think we, we, we have, that kind of makes sense. We, we have capital projects as kind of a placeholder there. We had. Infrastructure, because it's the same night we're talking with EPW, but we could very easily kind of revisit. The rest of those capital projects. And then if anybody else had any other. Questions related to, to some of the ARPA related ones. So, so that would make sense if we could do it that night. Great. Are there any other questions then? In general, on community services? Cynthia?
Um, first is a, a comment and then a question. Um, thank you for, for arranging the presentations for the various organizations. It would be helpful if the presentation and the discussion. Was specifically on the programs that were to receive funding by the city rather than the totality of their programs in general. Um, just so we, we can be very specific in understanding what the funding is supposed to be. Um, enabling. So that would be my request. The, uh, the question that I have is. Um, is there any aspect in the budget, and I apologize, I didn't see it. Um, with the continuing support for the Hangar Theater.
A good question, and it slips, I could go digging. Uh, but I'm not recalling. Steve, do you, do you remember?
Uh, no, there is, there isn't any funds for, for the hangar.
And, and so I know typically the city contributed, I believe, is it fifty thousand dollars for capital maintenance for the Hangar Theater? And so this would be. A unusual suspension of that contribution?
No, that was a three year plan where we committed to giving them a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over a three year period. And the last. Year of that funding was last year.
Right, correct.
Okay. All right. So they did not come to us for a request and they're fully aware that they're not receiving the funds anymore. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Donna?
Um, I hear guitar music. Yeah, so this isn't directly related to human services. It's related to overall, general, overall. No, it's related to the ARPA money. And so those of you who are on, who, who will be on council next year. I hope that you remember. That some of these ARPA donations are one time things and they shouldn't. You should be very careful next year about thinking of this as a baseline or a precedent or something. So when you're thinking next year, oh, we did such and such money to this organization last year. Remember, that was special. And so it's not baseline or precedent. I mean, you can certainly repeat it if you want to, but it has to be a conscious decision at the time. It's not. Um, it's, it's a, I'm not gonna say it's a one time thing, because you might want to do it again, given rational consideration of the need. But, um, it, it should be approached consciously in that way and not as a precedent.
I couldn't agree more, by the way. Great, great reminder and very true that we should. View particularly the community services, but all the ARPA funding this way as, uh. You know, that we can't sign up to maintain these commitments long term, because it would. Explode the tax rate.
Okay.
I will be here to remind you.
Except for a public comment, of course.
She can show up to the public hearing, tell you all what she thinks. What's your countdown clock say? I know Donna is actively has a countdown clock going.
Oh, I forgot to check it today. I think it's about eighty or seventy nine. I don't know.
Great. All right. Anything else for this evening?
Uh, Deb, I can give you numbers for.
Oh, great. Okay. Now, so I was just about to do is to go back to our list, so.
Yep. So, uh, the, the amount needed for the addition of the code inspector to January from. From, um. From April was twenty thousand eight hundred and twenty one dollars.
Okay.
And then the amount needed for the full time events coordinator is forty one thousand and ninety nine dollars.
Is that on top of what's in the budget?
Correct, that's, yep.
I'm assuming that includes fringe.
Yeah, well, all these.
That's over ninety. That's over ninety thousand dollars.
Yes.
Good grief.
Well, that includes fringe, remember?
Yeah, remember, all these are fringe related positions, so they include fringe.
Yeah, whatever the salary is, I think it's about, what, thirty five percent or is it more than that?
Well, really, yeah, it depends on the salary. So it can range anywhere from. Thirty five percent to seventy five percent. So it really depends. And then the senior plan examiner position, that would be ninety one thousand eight fifty seven. And, you know, we'll, we'll talk with planning to go through their. Their position list and make sure that is in fact needed. But, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna leave that off the list for now until. If they determine that is something that they want, just maybe have them do that RAM form. So we have that all sorted out. Okay. So thank you for those. I've adjusted those numbers. And then I guess my next question is after. Our discussion this evening, does anyone want to make any modifications? Um, you want to add or subtract anything from the budget, which means do you want anything? Put on the list for consideration? Doesn't look like it. Okay, are there any questions? We get a break for a few days. So this will give staff time to work on all of the different questions we've had. It'll give us time to firm up. Some of the presentations and, you know, do whatever outreach we need to do with some of those groups. And I think. Are we good to go? Great. So I think. I never forget if we have to officially adjourn or we just say. Goodbye until the next time, so.
I think we recess. I think we moved to recess.
We just do a move to recess. Is there someone who'll move? That Laura seconded by Graham. So all those in favor of recessing until the twenty first. Looks unanimous. Excellent. Have a great weekend, everyone.
Thanks, Deb. Good job, everyone.